Good evening, everyone. And it's seven o'clock, so welcome to the Clifton Board of Education General Meeting, April 11th, 2024. Please stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Danny is out today. It's her spring break. So Mr. Shahada, please call the roll.
Ms. Bassford?
Here.
Mr. Bruntiak?
Here.
Mr. Canova?
Here.
Mr. Mejia?
Here.
Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Siano?
Here.
Ms. Suarez?
Here.
President Perez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate, lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape-recorded in accordance with policy 0168.
So we'll start off the meeting. Do we have a student representative report? Hi, Jada. Welcome.
Good evening. So I'm going to start off with clubs. So Key Club, the Clifton Kwanis family is consisting of CHS Key Club, Woodrow Wilson Middle School Builders Club, and the school 17K kids will be holding a collection in May to benefit the St. Joseph's Hospital and the Pediatric Hematology and Oncology Department. They will be collecting coloring books, crayon crayons, Play-Doh, character colorful band-aids, arts and crafts kits, and monetary donations, but please note that they're only taking Crayola crayons. Please unmute Turk with any questions. Our mock trial club, the CHS Mock Trial Team is the best in New Jersey. They are number one out of 250 teams that participated in this year's tournament. The Clifton Mock Trial Team defeated the Mainland Regional High School from Southern New Jersey and the front New Jersey Supreme Court Justice Rabner and the Honorable Judge Clark as the U.S. Defense Government and Ellis v. Kirkwin. Our next stop is Wilmington, Delaware, from May 2nd to 5th to represent the New Jersey National High School Mock Trial Championship. The team will argue both sides of the case in a two-day tournament with four rounds, so please wish them luck. Our robotics team qualified for the World Championship. They are third last week in the New Jersey/Delaware District Championship, and they won the autonomous award. Our Mustang ambassadors will be selling ID holders in the Crock gibbets for $1 each, the sale ones every Wednesday after school in the Clifton High School Media Center. And for sports, there have been a lot of great things happening with our athletics, and that includes our girls' flag football team. Our flag football has been rising in popularity since our team has been rising in popularity, and the Clifton High School is no exception. They continue to win their games, and they're on a streak after an impressive win against our rivals, PCTI, and their last win against Union City. One of our captains, Kira Coy, shout it out, Megan Velito, and Amanda Perzuto for their hard work and commitment to the team, and as always, please make sure to come out and support our Mustangs. So that's it for tonight. Good evening.
Thank you, Jada. Okay, we will do, start with our awards presentations. We're going to start with our students of the, April Students of the Month and Ninth Grade, I believe.
Mr. President? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bruntiak, thank you.
Ninth Grade, Tiana Rubavkakova. Our Freshman of the Month is Tiana Rubavkakova. As a frequent traveler, Tiana enjoys learning about new cultures and languages, so it's no surprise her favorite subject is Italian. Along with her older sister and best friend, her eighth grade teachers have been the most influential and impactful throughout her life, teaching her independence and lessons she will use throughout high school and her future. Tiana keeps herself busy by teaching others how to pronounce her last name, playing volleyball and lacrosse at CHS, and is also a part of the Heroes and Cool Kids Program. Tiana strives to maintain good grades and keep herself involved throughout her years at CHS. She can also see herself taking part in the CHS College Programs in my future years in high school, such as the Bergen and PCCC Program. Certificate of Achievement, this recognition is certified to Tiana Rubavkakova on behalf of the Clifton Board of Education Administration for CHS Student of the Month, April 2024. Congratulations, Tiana.
Do we have parents here? Tell mom to come up. Do you want to come up? I'll take the pictures for you with your camera if you'd like.
Next up is our sophomore Student of the Month, and that is going to be Lucas Chen. Our sophomore student of the month has developed a keen interest in chemistry due to his exploration of the different components of life. Mr. Iwah stands out as the most influential teacher for Lucas, appreciated for his con demeanor and willingness to resolve issues. Lucas finds inspirations in his parents, who consistently demonstrate love, care, and a commitment to doing things that are right. His extracurricular activities include being part of the soccer team, as well as contributing to success in high school, to completing his work diligently, listening attentively, and showing respect to other students. Previously, Lucas participated in the Computer Science Academy, indicating a willingness to engage in academic programs offered by the Clifton Public Schools. Certificate of Achievement, this recognition is certified to Lucas Chen on behalf of the Clifton Board of Education and Administration for CHS Sophomore Student of the Month, April 2024. Congratulations.
Great. It's what a focus thing for someone. It keeps going blurry. I'm not really sure.
Too much handsomeness in one photo happens all the time.
There we go. Stay right there.
I don't know why that's funny.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Here's Santiago.
No? I have her.
Oh, Commissioner Suarez, sorry.
That's fine. I have the honor to present Nasli Jildis, our Junior Student of the Month. Nasli Jildis, our Junior Student of the Month, finds joy in subjects like math, English, history, and ceramics. Inspired by her dedicated teachers, especially Mr. Rogers and Ms. Anderson, she values critical thinking and overcoming challenges with purpose. Nasli actively participates in extracurriculars such as Key Club, mentoring ESL students, and contributing articles on Medium. Despite starting as an ESL student, she has progressed to honors in AP classes, demonstrating resilience and growth. With aspirations to become an eco-minimalist architect, Nasli plans to pursue higher education while balancing her personal and academic pursuits. Please, let's give it up for Nasli Jildis, Student of the Month, Junior.
Yes. Twelfth Grade Abel Chang, Abel Chang, our Senior Student of the Month, finds his passion in history, valuing its significance in understanding the world around us. Dr. Casal stands out as his most influential teacher, imparting valuable life skills and lessons. Abel's mother serves as his greatest inspiration, guiding him to strive for excellence and supporting him in all his endeavors. He participates in football as an extracurricular activity where he faced challenges during junior-year football camp but found camaraderie and growth through the experience. Looking ahead, Abel aspires to become a physical therapist and plans to attend Seton Hall University to pursue his doctorate. With sincere congratulations on your meritorious achievement with recognition by resolution of the Board of Education, the desire to excels the formula to a lifetime of success. Your efforts have brought distinction to you, your family, and Clifton Public Schools. Congratulations, Abel.
There we go. Three, two, one. Sound like the paparazzi. Congratulations.
Next, we'll be awarding the Employee of the Month, and we're going to start with District Award, Vina Krishna.
Thank you. It is my pleasure and honor to give this award out. I requested to say this. District Level Vincent Constantino, District Residency Investigator. Vincent institutes random residency audits of school students. In addition to targeted efforts for students suspected of non-residency, he investigates and conducts a limited number of residency checks of students selected at random. He is part of the security team in visiting schools during monthly drills to ensure all drills are conducted with maximum effectiveness and safety. Vincent has gone above and beyond for all his colleagues, such as security and other staff members with different positions all throughout the district. Always manages to keep a smile on his face, no matter if a bad or good situation gets the job done. When asked to no questions, ask a real team player by heart. Vincent is always positive, hardworking, and ambitious to get the job done. Clifton Public Schools District Distinguished Employee of the Month for April 2024 presented to Vincent Constantino for outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the Clifton Public Schools Learning Community. Congratulations, friends.
Why don't you leave it? I'll take it for you. Go ahead, leave it. Get in there. Keep smiling. All right, whose was this? Jess's? Okay, ready? This is for Jess. Three, two, one. And then for me. Hope I didn't break your phone. Congrats, Ben. He's an all-Hudson County boy.
I do.
You may have to get him.
Elementary Level Angela Basanisi, School Social Worker. Angela is an exceptional employee who services half the elementary schools and Woodrow Wilson Middle Schools, working with the most vulnerable students in our district. She uses her expert clinical background to effectively assess and work with students in a safe and supportive therapeutic environment. Angela is a natural, positive, and warm individual. She provides a sense of calm and security to all she works with. She offers an empathetic and supportive ear, offers reassurance, guidance, and perspective. She adapts to a wide range of students, meets them where they are, and encourages them to reach their full potential. Clifton and the students she services are fortunate to have her. This Distinguished Award of the Month for April 2024 presented to Angela Basanisi for outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the Clifton Public Schools Learning Community. Congratulations.
No, no. Are you going up there too? Family first. Mr. Perez, you're not visible. There you go. Stay right there. There you go. Three, two, one. And then, I don't know whose phone I, yours, right? Okay. All right. Whoops. What's that?
That wasn't your phone, Jess. Don't worry.
Three, two, one. I'm going to come on. One more time. Three, two, one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Our middle school Award recipient is due this evening, so next month's meeting will be presented to you. Next, we have our Employee of the Month for the high school. That would be Mr. Siano.
On high school level, it is Stephen Sarzano, History Teacher. Stephen pushes his students towards being self-guided learners. Stephen is an expert in his course content and has a keen sense of how to motivate and inspire high school students. Stephen empowers students' voices and develops them into global citizens by emphasizing textual analysis and analytical writing. Stephen prepares students for academic autonomy and college preparatory work. Stephen has a lifelong, has been a lifelong resident and graduated from the Clifton Public Schools District. Steve is always building partnerships with his colleagues, friendly relations with the students, and shares ideas on how to make CHS the best place it can be. Mr. Sarzano goes beyond the call of duty every day. He is highly involved in his work with the race club, kickball competitions, ESL tutoring, scorecard work during sports events, student versus faculty sporting events, junior and senior prom, PBIS, and countless fun and engaging activities with his social students. He always promotes all school events and is in attendance of all of them. Stephen, I have a plaque for you.
You know, I was Stephen's teacher. I could hit him with. No computers in high school, England.
I'm just getting to a microphone. Okay, I have the honor and privilege of recognizing last month's district-level winner, who unfortunately wasn't with us last month, but is here this evening. Samantha DeRose, our Communication Technology Specialist. Samantha DeRose tirelessly navigates the district, capturing all of our special moments that tell a visual story of our Clifton, one student, Clifton One, students and staff. She is at every Board of Education meeting, making sure to share all that happens through our social media platform. From our district website to flyers and posters or banners, she is consistently creating for our district at a moment's notice. Samantha has been a supporter of Key Club's service endeavors for the past 17 years. As a teacher, she shaved her head to motivate her students to do well in school and was always the go-to person for tech help and guidance, often leading department meetings and taking her personal time to help her less tech-savvy colleagues. Her intellect and welcoming presence is always visible in everything she does. Congratulations to a well-earned award, Samantha.
Well, I'm taking photo. Anyway, hold on.
One, two, three. And then, one, two, three. And you know, I do want to say that. I've been with the district for 23 years and in multiple capacities, and I have my mom and dad to thank. My mom worked in HR many years ago, but in this role as a communications specialist, it is an absolute joy to highlight our incredible staff and our phenomenal students. It brings me so much joy every single day, and I couldn't ask for a better job because of the staff and the students. So I thank you, really.
Go right ahead. Mr. President, if I may, a little-known fact about Mr. Rose is that she's also a rapper. And I don't mean like a gift rapper. I mean like 50 Cent rapper. She rapped at one of the talent shows, and I'm not going to put her on the spot tonight, but Sam, if you're feeling a little frisky later and you want to rap for everybody, you know, just, we'll let it all out. But yeah, she's multi-multi. No, no, I would never, I would never do that. But talk about somebody who's multi-talented. Did you see what happened when all of a sudden nobody could take a picture? It was like chaos. God forbid she's not here. Nobody knew what to do. So congratulations to all our Students of the Month and Employees of the Month.
Congratulations to everyone. Yes? We would like Commissioner Bassford, please read the expression of condolence this evening.
Thank you. It was a heavy heart that I read this. Whereas on March 21st, 2024, the community noted with sorrow the passing of Greg Dickey. And whereas Mr. Dickey has served the Clifton Board of Education and the children of Clifton faithfully and conscientiously for 15 years until his retirement in July 2013. Mr. Dickey started in 1998 as vice-principal at the high school, and in 2002, he became the principal at School 11 until his retirement. In 1976, he joined the United States Secret Service as a secret agent. Mr. Dickey served as a special agent for 20 years, working in various positions in New Jersey, New York, and Washington DC, including several presidential campaigns and details. Mr. Dickey loved science, fiction books, and movies, and cherished spending time with his family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this resolution be forwarded to his bereaved family to serve as an expression to serve as an expression of the great regard in which Mr. Dickey was held by the Board of Education, the administration, employees, and the pupils of the Clifton Public School System. And be it further resolved that the contents of this resolution be noted in its entirety in the official minutes of the Clifton Board of Education for future generations to Berus, dated April 11, 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Basford. At this point, I usually like to let people know that you don't have to stay any longer if you're here for an award, et cetera. You're certainly welcome to, but it's, it's up to you.
President Paris, I just wanna note that the Dickey family's in the audience tonight. And maybe you can, Dr. Robitose, maybe you can say a few things, words to them? Thank you.
Yeah, if, if anybody would like to say a few words, please, you're more than welcome to say a few words. I did not know Mr. Dickey, but I've only heard incredible things about him, so if, if you would like to say a few words, please feel free to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
My name is Abel Chong, so I actually had him during my kindergarten years at School 11, and I'm very sorry to Mr. Dickey's family. I'm not sure, yeah, I'm very sorry for your loss, because I could tell he really did care about the students, and you know, it's just sad that he has passed away, so I'm sorry for your loss.
That's very nice of you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Abel.
That was nice. Exactly, exactly.
Thank you, wow. That's awesome that there was a student here.
That really is.
Thank you very much to the Clifton Board of Education for that recognition tonight. My name is Kim Dickey Pentangelo, I'm Greg's daughter, and I'm also an educator. I've, I work for the Westfield Public Schools as a, as a school counselor. My dad passed away three weeks ago today, so it's still pretty fresh and, and pretty raw. And it's, it's funny because there were a few teachers who, from the Clifton Public Schools, who came to my father's wake, and it was interesting because they spoke so highly of him, and as his daughter, you know, it's your dad, so your impression of your father is always very different. And they spoke so much about how he cared about them as people. And I think, as a counselor in a school system, when you hear that your father cared about his teachers as people, that's really what matters. And that, that to me was so important to hear, and you know, when someone passes away, you're always looking for signs. And I was talking to Sandy, my dad's partner, for, for the past twenty-plus years, that I'd been looking for signs so often, and when we found out that tonight you guys would be doing this recognition of him, I started laughing, because my grandfather passed away forty-one years ago today, my dad's dad, when I was only nine. So, my dad used to call me every year on April 11th and say, "Do you know what today is, Kim?" And I would be like, "Yes, Dad, I know what today is." And so, today was the first year that he didn't call me to ask me that question. So, I think it's pretty fitting that today is April 11th and that we're here today acknowledging him. Clifton held a very special place in my father's heart. He cared very deeply for the work that he did here for his students. He cared very deeply for the teachers that he worked with every day. So, the fact that all of you are doing this tonight means a lot to my brother, to myself, and to his five grandsons. So, on behalf of the entire Dickey family, I thank all of you very much from the bottoms of our hearts for this recognition, and I hope his legacy continues. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Regusa?
We'll wait for the exodus that occurs. Good to see everyone. Okay, yes? All right. Good evening, everyone. President Paris, Dr. Robitose, who's currently not here, but thank you all, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to once again showcase what we're doing, the wonderful things. Good night, everyone. I, you know, drawing inspiration from what, from the Dickey family, and for what it means to, to be part of the One Clifton community and to be a Mustang. Tonight's presentation is, is really inspired by something that Ms. Basford asked at one of our most recent meetings. Ms. Basford, you asked, is this working, what we're doing, in, in one of our meetings? And we come together every month to showcase and highlight our staff, students, and our building administrators on the PBIS framework implementation. And one of the things that we do once a year, usually around the summer, is provide you with outcome data. From our conversation, Commissioner Basford, I, I thought that if, if one person has a question, that means there's more than one of us that has a question, so I wanted to provide you all with some current outcome data on the effectiveness on, of the implementation of our framework in, in Clifton Public Schools. You'll see a little bit more of this during the summer months, because we'll have complete data for some sets, but so far, this is what we have. And really, what really grounds all of our implementation, our guiding forces such as the systems, or the place, the things that you see in place to drive all of the practices that we recognize our folks for, the data that you'll see in front of you before in just a few, and ultimately, all of it is based around equity and the, the, really the aspect of everyone in our district mattering, from students to all staff in our buildings, to all of our parents and caregivers in our community. So, here are some, I'll try not to bore you with some of the data, but I am a data geek myself. The first set of data that you see in front of you is called the District Fidelity Inventory Tool. And this is a tool that is nationally used by all of the technical assistance centers out in Missouri, where all schools in all states identify the district-wide implementation of PBIS. Now, from year to year, we've been, we've, we started to pilot this for the center during COVID in 2020, and you'll see that we had a significant increases, and then something happens from last year to this year that causes some of our domains to decrease. You'll see things, by the way, this, this inventory is taken by the District Collaborative PBIS Team, in which twenty-three participants on that team answered these questions around these different domains. And so, some of the things that were interesting to us as we took the survey earlier this winter and started to analyze the trends are, is the idea that there was some decrease. I wanna give you on a, a picture of why. Most recently this year, we have parents and students that joined our collaboration team. And so, one, when folks are taking some of these, when folks are taking these surveys, what we instruct folks to say is, if you don't know the answer to that, you mark it as, as if it's not there. Doesn't mean that it's not being implemented, it just means that we have to do better at educating everyone around the table as to what is going on. So, that's where you see that, but it's interesting because those responses came from that. The beauty of this is that our team is growing across all of our shareholders, not just our school staff. Next, we have, for years, our schools self-rate their implementation, and, and these, these surveys and tools are utilized to develop instructional planning for our students and staff, and it measures the implementation of the universal tier system. The national average is about seventy percent, year after year. This is for our seventeen K through twelve schools. Now, just, just backdrop, pre-K has, follows the pyramid model, and they have similar data sets, but with a different tool, so that's why you see seventeen schools being measured. Year after year, Clifton Public Schools continues to, to be light-years ahead in district-wide implementation. Scores like this afford us the opportunity to present at a, at a state and national level, but more importantly, it provides feedback to our own staff to say, this is what we're doing really well and we wanna maintain, or these are the areas that we can improve upon. Again, if the data's not there, the anecdotal could be great, but the data really backs up what we're doing. This next slide, so the benchmark of quality was what the national centers were using in previous years. They've now, between last year and this year, have turned over to the Tier Fidelity Inventory. So, this is the updated BOQ for this year, right? It's called the TFI. And again, I think we are getting asked to officially present at the Northeast Conference in May, based on our district scores. If you notice, we have an overall, overall average across the different subscales of way above-average implementation, and this all happens because all of our staff is fully, really believes in our students' growth and ability to really make a change in the world, and that starts by feeling part of the One Clifton community. Last but not least, we partnered, thanks to Dr. Robitose, we've spoken about this, with the Rutgers, with Rutgers University and the New Jersey Sky Climate Survey Platform. And so, all of our buildings, as I mentioned before, have, are, have devised a plan spearheaded by Mr. Jengaro and Ms. Kusa Levage and, and, and building administrators to really utilize the climate survey results for all of our teams. But tonight, I wanted to show you a climate survey parent portion of it, because I thought it'd be fitting for us all. The scale for this data set, the highest possible score is four, and the, what the state average is looking for is anything above a 1.75, right? Because this is their first official year, last year, they piloted. And so, what we see across our schools, we're certainly way above that, in particular, in particular, how, how our parents feel about the safety and security of their students, of their children and students. One of the things to note is the negative student interpersonal, oops, behaviors. Now, this particular item is scared, is, is scored inversely, meaning that the lower the score, the better. This is the way that, that platform is set up, and one of the things that our, our counselors are joining force with us and our teams are around this negative student interpersonal behaviors, all the questions deal around how students feel about social media influences, how they treat each other outside of the school, and of course, we know that carries over into our building. So, those things are a little bit more challenging for us to really, to really make an, an effect, right? We can't control what's outside of our buildings, however, our counseling teams and our PBIS teams are really trying hard in developing those skills and those, and those character ed lessons, so that we're teaching things like digital citizenship, we're teaching things on how to just interact and be kind humans outside of our school, outside of our buildings. And so, we did see a decrease in that number as well, which is what we wanna see for that particular category. Very important to note, I'll have, the schools in particular will each have plans developed around for the student and staff climate survey results, and the, the, all of these pieces are, are joined, or all the datas triangulate, triangulated to really make an, an extensive plan on how, how all the different teams can utilize. So, we have our security specialists using this data, so as I mentioned, our counseling or PBIS teams are building collaborative teams. And, and I'm just really excited to provide you all with that, because this is all of our work come to life. I wanna thank you once again for all of your support, because Dr. Robitose, Mrs. Kusa Levage, Mr. Shahada, and commissioners, this all happens with your full support. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you very much, Paula, that was great, and it's, it's great to see the impact the program's having, and how well, really, really Clifton is, is leading. Dr. Robitose, you have a comment?
Ms. Regusa, thank you. Data is critical, right? We, we spend a lot of time doing this, and we need to know, is the time and effort and money we're putting into this having an impact? So, I think clearly, this is. Just one question I have, did, how, how, we know it's difficult to get people to fill out surveys, how was our parent turnout on surveys? What was our response rate?
So, all right.
Cause that, well, in fairness, statistically, I know you, you don't, you don't, you don't need a, you know, you need five percent to be.
In fairness, we, in fairness, statistically, we say if we have thirty percent feedback, we count that as a win.
That's huge.
Huge, thirty percent feedback, and that's on average with five to six different prompts, right? Whether it's through blackboard, emails, roll calls, it's, 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 so our buildings varied by response, where some of our buildings had as high as twenty-three percent response rate, which was, and some of our schools who really had less than one percent response rate. So, we're all across the gamut. The one thing that I will give the administrators a huge shout-out for is when Mr. Jengaro met with them in October and subsequently in January, there were, there was a lot of planning on how to get parental and community involvement. So, the surveys were kept open longer to encourage folks for back, we started that survey collection process in back-to-school night. We, we had it in multiple opportunities when, when folks were coming in, they, some schools had laptops set up, so that parents just visiting the building had availability to do that. We had some schools who provided technical support in multiple languages for when parents came in, so they, the administration really worked hard at getting those numbers to increase this year. I think that as, as administrators saw what was beneficial and what increased those scores, some of our other admins said, "Oh, well, you know, we'll try that next time around as well." So, in all fairness, it was all across the board.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda will be board committee reports, and we'll start with residency and Commissioner Santiago, please.
Thank you, President Paris. So, we have two since we met early March. So, the first one is residency security technology committee, meeting minutes Tuesday, March 12th, which was my birthday, and we still had a committee meeting, but that's okay, dedicated. So, the meeting took place on Tuesday, March 12th, and began at 5:02. In attendance from administration were Mr. Shahada, Mr. Doctor, Mrs. Nola, Board of Education members, and. Board of Education members, and attendance were myself, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Siano, and President Paris. Mr. Doctor explained that registration for the 2024, 2025 school year is now open, and we currently have over 265 students in the process of registering. That's the first committee report, so 265 students. It was also brought up that a total of 14 potential non-residents have been identified since the last meeting and currently, currently being investigated for removal. Finally, Mr. Doctor discussed some discrepancies with other schools claiming Clifton students. The district's lawyers will be consulted about steps moving forward. Ms. Nola described the security drill of the month and that the drills were completed successfully throughout the district. Finally, Mr. Doctor provided an update to a question concerning, concerning formatting of board docs. While the feature is not presently available, the company is working to create and will update the district when it might be available. The meeting adjourned at 5:35. Did I, I'll read the April committee meeting?
Yes, please.
Can I read April? Okay, great. So, meeting took place on Tuesday, April 9th, and began at 5:02. In attendance from administration were Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shahada, Mr. Doctor, Ms. Nola, Mr. Mountain, Board of Education members, and attendance were myself, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Siano, and President Alan Paris. Mr. Doctor provided an update that registrations for the 2024, 2025 school year is current, is currently at over 350 students either completed or pending. Ms. Nola explained that the security drill of the month was completed by all of the buildings and that the observations of these drills were positive. She also commented on the sidewalk repairs which occurred at school nine and that she requested from Clifton PD to be notified if construction or repairs will impact any of our schools. This topic has been brought up previously at Municipal Alliance and will be discussed again. Mr. Mountain commented on a power outage which occurred due to an issue outside of the school district's purview. Generators began working, and one server needed to reboot, which took less than 20 minutes. Any long-lasting or large-scale outages or disruptions will be communicated with board members. The meeting adjourned at 5:26 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Commissioner Suarez, could you read our policy minutes, please?
Certainly, thank you, President Paris. The meeting, in attendance at the meeting was myself, Commissioner Mejia, Commissioner Santiago, President Paris. And the meeting took place on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, and began at 4:05 PM. In attendance from this administration is Dr. Danny Robertozzi, Ahmed Shahada, Michael Doctor, Maggie Miller, Board of Attorney. I had mentioned the commissioners that were present as well. Mr. Doctor reviewed the change to policy 6620 to reflect Assistant Superintendent of Business instead of the title of Assistant Business Administrator. This was agreed upon by the entire committee. Mr. Doctor then explained the requested addition and additional specific disciplinary categories to better detail infractions which occur. This was agreed upon the entire committee. Mr. Santiago raised his concerns regarding staff attendance and associated accountability. Ms. Miller explained that she had Mr. Jengaro have been working on appropriate procedures to address staff attendance, which the district can follow moving forward and will bring them to the committee when complete. The meeting adjourned, the meeting adjourned at 4:37 PM. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Canova, please read the legislative committee minutes.
The Legislative Committee met on March 26th. Present was myself, Mr. Brunsack, Mr. Mejia, Mr. Paris, Dr. Robertozzi, Mr. Jengaro, Ms. Kusilevich, Mr. Shahada, and the Assemblywoman, Ms. Begoli. So the meeting start time was 12:00 PM, meeting end time was 1:00 PM. Overview, the committee members and central administration were warmly welcomed and sharing a robust understanding of the diverse perspectives present in the room. The teacher sub shortage, teacher, subs, teacher shortage and pathway, teacher, teaching was discussed. Commissioners raised concerns regarding teaching substitute shortage and how this is impacting all districts statewide. Discussion ensued on what the state has planned to combat this growing issue. The Assemblywoman shared insights on a plethora of legislative endeavors aimed at addressing the shortage unveiling 12 bills currently in the Assembly. Notably, among these bills are efforts to streamline certification processes such as removing K-6 certification, basic skills, practice, praxis portion. Additionally, initiatives to enhance hiring practices by broadening science requirements to general sciences were discussed. The NJ Stars program lauded for its commendable efforts at the community college level was elaborated upon, particularly focusing on its income-based requirements. Three, state aid formula 2% cap. Commissioners inquired about the new SAFRA formula allocations to take place once the current formula sunsets. Also, there were discussions if the 2% cap tax levy would be raised to combat increased cost. Currently, districts only allow to raise 2% tax with a public vote. This for many districts doesn't even cover the contractual raises that take place every year. A new bill proposed by the Assemblywoman garnered attention seeking funding for pre-K, special education, and transportation to alleviate districts' burdens. A new bill would be proposed by the Assemblywoman garnered attention seeking funding for pre-K, special education, and transportation to alleviate district burdens. Four, free lunch outstanding balances. Commissioners inquired if there was any plans in place to shift to universal lunch in the near future due to soaring outstanding lunch balances. The Assemblywoman was shocked to hear the large amount owed from families. Speaker Coughlin, Coughlin has legislation in its, its strong interest in getting universal free lunch. District asked if there is a possibility to use cafe funds like priorities to repay debt. Number five, charter students, school tuitions. Deliberations unfold around the introduction of a charter school bill, A2943 slash A2944, aiming to fortify regulations and policy framework to enhance budgeting accuracy, signaling a proactive stance towards educational reform. Six, additional funding, special ed cost technology. The transformative impact of technological advancements catalyzed by the COVID-19 pandemic was reflected upon. Observations were made regarding districts' successful adaptation to one-to-one technology initiatives now seamlessly integrated into budgetary concerns. Seven, Senate Bill 2421, abolishment of 5756. The Assemblywoman has a similar bill about causing harm to others. Abolishment 5756, committee member asked if there was any discussion on this. Assemblywoman said it is in litigation, and legislators refrain until that is complete. Any questions?
Just one comment. The, the Assemblywoman is a acting superintendent of schools, so we have someone representing us that certainly knows how schools work, so.
Yeah, and many times when we brought up our concerns, she already was like, oh, yes, that's 100%. You're right, you know, this needs to be fixed in the same boat.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Canova. Commissioner Basford, could you read our-
Yes, my pleasure. Thank you, President Paris. Booster Club met on April 8th. We started at 6:30 in the evening, and we ended at 7:30 present. I'm just going to read the people from the administration, the board. I'm going to keep the parents' names quiet because the community members. Dr. Robertozzi, Mark Jengaro, Ahmed Shahida, Mr. Watch, myself, Tanya Suarez, and various people that represented soccer, Clifton rec, the cheer team, the baseball, and also basketball. It was basically, to give you a synopsis of what happened, it was an open dialogue of the Booster Club parents. Dr. Robertozzi facilitated the meeting to give them a chance to get to know each other and to form a bigger group as a Booster Club whole. So we had a conversation about how to form 5013 or to how to get organized with fundraising. So there was a lot of comments going back and forth. And so this is an open dialogue that you see on your, on your computers. It was really very informative. They're going to band together. They're going to be able to help each other in a more formal way. Fundraising also if they need a help with vendors and things like that. So they had, they had a comment about the 5013C and how to fundraise. Then they talked about what if a parent doesn't join a Booster Club. Dr. Robertozzi talked about different bylaws that we have in place and also about tagging, how we, we don't have to get permission anymore for the students to tag from the Clifton Police Department. But he has, we have a bylaw about, about tagging it. The district wants to know when the teams are actually tagging for security and safety for our students, that we know they're out there as well. But they also have to get permission from the owner. And one of the parents from, that plays a dual role on the rec department, and she's on the committee, and also the soccer Booster Club spoke about how there's been evidence of a lot of out-of-town teams coming and tagging over by Big Lot and over by that area. And I don't know if that maybe what you want to send that to Muni Alliance, maybe to bring that conversation up again to have about, maybe we should come up with some kind of procedure about how our local teams get first shot at tagging first in Clifton. So they were, they were pretty, pretty robust on that. And then we, we went into about who pays for travel, food, services, and for events. Dr. Robertozzi was very clear about that, and he explained why certain events with certain teams get paid for and don't get paid for, such as like if they, if the football team was to play in a state championship, and it was all the way down exit one on the turnpike, we would pay for their busing because they're representing the, you know, the league in a championship versus if they go to just a meet up at PCTI and they played against it, we don't, you know, supply them with food prior to them going to that. So he, he actually explained that in a very nice way. He had, and they were, they were very receptive to everything that was coming out of the committee. So it was a really robust conversation. We talked about future, need for future meetings. Then we talked about fundraising efforts. We had a new parent in the group that's trying to form a Booster Club for the basketball team, so they all jumped in to support him. And one of the suggestions were, because the HSA committee had brought this to task about giving a platform for the HSAs to speak to each other. So the suggestion was made that we give that platform to the Booster Clubs as well. It's Google Classroom, so they can speak amongst each other. They can share events. They can share flyers with the district, so we can get them because we don't know when certain events are going on, so we'll be more, but they can share fundraising. They can share ideas or just help each other and support if they have a difficult situation going on. So it was really, it was a nice meeting. We actually got cut off because we could have went longer. We only had the Zoom on for an hour, so it shut off after now. So the other thing that was mentioned, I mentioned to Commissioner Suarez because she was on a meeting with us, we were missing our other member because she was at, she was away, was that we would like, Dr. Robertozzi, maybe the board to meet 10 minutes prior to the actual Booster Club meeting, just the board members themselves with you. And so because it was more of an open dialogue with the Booster Club parents talking to each other. So it wasn't really a formal meeting. We had no agenda, but it was really, really nice to see the dedication of these people and what they want to bring to the table, and they're going to be looking for our support. So we're going to have another one in about a month, and we'll try to do them on a regular basis, a quarterly basis. But there, out of it came a couple of concerns that I have to bring to athletics, and I'll bring that to the committee level as well. And there was also a policy question that was given to Commissioner Suarez, and she's going to bring it to the policy committee. So it was a good meeting. So any questions?
Commissioner Basford, just for those listening in, and this term was new for myself, can you please explain tagging?
Oh, tagging, oh, yes, I'm sorry. So a lot of people don't know what tagging is. Tagging is when a sports team or an organized team or, or a club or committee from the local schools, and I'm going to use Safety Patrol because it's very common to me. The Safety Patrol will get permission from the superintendent that they want to tag. Tag is when they go out in front of a store or a local business with a can, with usually their logo on it, and they ask for donations from the community with spare change or dollars or anything like that. And they stand say in front of a quick check. And I used to call it shaking the can because they shake the can to let you know they're standing there. And people dump money into their buckets, and they go home. All that money is pure profit. And some, some teams do it organized, some teams don't do it organized, some teams if you have to tag and you don't want to, you can pay a fee so you don't have to stand out in the cold or want to do it. But there was, when my children did it, we had to actually get a permit from the police department. We also had to go through background checks for the people that were running the tagging event to make sure we didn't have a criminal record because it was money being exchanged. And they wanted to make sure the people that were standing didn't have any violations against children's welfare. So the police department doesn't do it anymore, but the one parent did bring up the fact is that outside teams are, are actually tagging at our really good spots. And the only reason why it goes through the superintendent so he knows when the tagging event is happening, and he knows what teams are out there, so for security and safety for our children's betterment and welfare. Does that help you?
Thank you. Absolutely. I'm sure others might have had-
It's an old term. It's now bringing back the OG.
Yeah, I was the same. I knew what it was. I never knew it as tagging.
Correct.
That's a-
Basically, I wonder if it comes from Taggeret.
I understand tagging as marking walls up, so.
Not graffiti.
Glad that you-
Not graffiti, okay.
Not graffiti, though.
We don't condone that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great meeting. We've bought a lot of energy, and I'm really looking for the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Basford.
It was, it was great.
This portion of the meeting is open to residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested to sign the register provided for this purpose and to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their commitments.
There's no one on the Zoom call.
There's no one on-
Seeing them make a motion to close.
Commissioner Basford, motion to close, second by Commissioner Mejia. Does anybody here like to step up and make some comments?
Good evening. My name is Kim Nguyen Puza. I'm a proud alumna of Clifton Schools and taught in Clifton Schools for 35 years before retiring a few years ago. I now volunteer as the Communications Director for the Clifton Education Foundation. One of the best things that has come out of that role is getting to know Samantha DeRose, who serves as our liaison to the superintendent. As you all know, Sam's professional skills are remarkable, but it's her passion and commitment to ensuring that all students are provided a strong education in an inclusive environment that fosters well-being, safety, and acceptance that truly makes me proud to call her a friend. I know that sentiment is shared by all of our other trustees, some of whom are here this evening to see Sam receive this well-deserved recognition. We love you, Sam. You have a heart of gold, and the district and our foundation are beyond lucky to have you. For those of you who may not know, the CEF has been providing grants for Clifton Public Schools for the past 26 years, funding special projects, programs, and initiatives not typically funded or fully funded by the regular Board of Education budget. To date, the CEF has funded over one-quarter of a million dollars to enhance education in our schools. Most recently, the CEF has funded, has fully funded makerspace in every elementary school media center, as well as recent and upcoming important mental health and well-being programming on every level. The CEF's function is to raise funds. Our trustees work diligently in and beyond our community to raise money to provide these grants and special funding. We seek the support of local businesses, individuals, and often our own friends and family to strengthen our ability to provide more and more funding each year. We are extremely grateful for those businesses that provide support. We encourage you to visit our business directory on our website, or social media pages on Facebook and Instagram to identify these businesses and thank them for, by patronizing them, embracing the district's One Clifton initiative. Support is a two-way street, and our community should be supporting those businesses that support our schools. There are several ways that you can support the CEF. Our upcoming annual fundraiser, the CHS Cast Film Festival, is celebrating 25 years. It takes place on May 1st at 6:00 PM and will be a fun family event featuring a DJ, photo booth- booth, snacks, door prizes, an alumni reunion dinner, and a variety of short films by Clifton High's young filmmakers in the cast program. I'm excited to announce this evening that the CEF has arranged to have renowned director, screenwriter, and producer Ron Maxwell, CHS class of 1964, whose credits include Gettysburg, Gods and Generals, The Night the Lights Went Out in Georgia, The Parent Trap 2, and a multitude of other well-known films attend the festival. Ron will attend the alumni pre-show dinner, as well as the film festival, then return to CHS the next morning to meet with our young filmmakers, to share his wisdom and hopefully inspire many to do as he did and pursue their dream of creating films. We hope to see some of you there that evening, and encourage residents to come and see the talent that educators Mike McConney and Joanna Huston have cultivated in the extraordinary cast program. We are also currently accepting sponsors and prize donations from local businesses and individuals. On May 18th, the Clifton Community Band's Lollipops and Roses concert at Clifton High School at 2:00 PM is another family-friendly event. We are grateful to the Clifton Community Band and the Clifton Board of Recreation for generously donating half of their proceeds to the CEF. Additionally, one of our business donors, CJ Legori, owner of Agamis Gourmet Delicatessen and Caterers located on Market Street, has partnered with us to donate 10% of each bill to the CEF for our Let's Do Lunch and Dine to Donate ongoing fundraisers. Details may be found on our social media pages. Grant season for the 2024-25 school year will reopen this spring. We are here to support our entire school community, including parent and student organizations. We strive to raise our profile and encourage you all to join us by spreading the word about the important work the Clifton Education Foundation is doing in our community, and encourage individuals and local businesses to show their support by donating to allow us to continue funding programs that enhance the education of all Clifton Public School students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puza. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments?
All right, good evening. Clifton City Union President Elias Ragsdale. Just a few things from last meeting. So first, there was mentioning of opening up the stadium to the public. As a member of our track team, and I've talked to coaches and other athletes, please, please do not do this. First of all, establishing city parks and ensuring recreation for the citizens of Clifton is not the job of the board or the school district. That is within the purview of the city council, Recreation Department, and the point is, it's the city's duty. The money used to recently renovate the entire field and track was paid for by Clifton Public School District for students and no one else. If the city of Clifton would like a track for people to walk on, or a football, or a soccer field to use, then they should go about doing that on their own. Second, but related to this point, the facility there is very frequently occupied with students every single day after school, on Saturdays, during the day the middle schoolers use it in gym class when the weather's nice, track and field team, football team, I think lacrosse uses it, flag football, and I really don't see when the public would be able to be there anyway. Just two main things. First, you know, it's a safety issue, and then two, is it worth opening up to the public? Opening up anything comes with liability. Unlike other public tracks and fields like this, the stadium does not serve just one purpose. In addition to being the football field and track and used for sports, it's my understanding that our maintenance department has an office there and a hub sort of thing. You know, constantly trucks are coming in and out that belong to the district, a portion of the stadium is blocked off from the rest of it, and it's really a parking lot for all these trucks. So I don't know how good of an idea it is to have the public, you know, roaming around here. Last meeting, it was also mentioned that we may need to staff security for this as well, or make it someone's duty to open and close the facility. And it just sounds like more unnecessary money spent or adding duties to employees of the district, which I think most aren't in favor of. And then also in regards to liability and issues, the previous question of vandalism, destruction of property, and similar concerns that go along with this. People may ride bikes on the track, which can ruin it. I mean, even just the shoes you wear have a big impact on the track and its sustainability. And I remember maybe two years ago, the city was dealing with issues at Memorial Park, because people were quite literally destroying the toilets and the public bathrooms and everything, and I think this is just a headache that we can all avoid, and one that's really not necessary. Next, there was also talk last meeting about our athletics and how we lose students and athletes to other districts. And one of the barriers when it comes to athlete retention and getting students to participate in sports is the requirement of a physical from a doctor. Rich, you didn't graduate too long ago, and I know you were an athlete, so maybe you understand this and remember it, it's like when the season starts, the big thing is get your physical and get your physical in. And so many students are denied entry onto a team simply because they didn't hand in a physical on time. You can ask any coach, athletic trainer, it's an ongoing issue. And this isn't an issue without a solution, though. In fact, it's my understanding that we brought this problem upon ourselves. I was recently told in the past, the district brought a doctor into the high school for about a week before the season, and students would be notified of this before the season and simply see the doctor right in the high school with no cost at all. I'm curious as to why we got rid of this. Dr. Robertozzi, I think in Linden they do this, PCTI they do it. So like, why did we stop it? Why limit our athletic ability, put the burden on families, and make it so much more of a complicated process? Some students have parents that are constantly working, there isn't time to schedule an appointment and see a doctor, or whether we like to recognize it or not, not everyone has health insurance and can so easily see a doctor the way we'd like them to. So now it's even a heavier burden on those that may be of a lower socioeconomic class and make it harder for those students to enjoy the privilege of athletics and playing high school sports. So please, I don't know if someone could bring this up, or it could be started as an initiative or at least looked into. And then lastly, I'm aware that contract negotiations for teachers are still ongoing, and I know we like to remark that the superintendent runs the day-to-day operations of our district, which he greatly does, but within this district are our teachers as well. I think of it like a bicycle. Yes, for it to be functioning, someone must be riding it, but you can only ride a bike so well if you don't check first to make sure that the tires have air, the brakes are working, the chains are clean, and to apply this to our situation here, we must take care of our teachers, which are those gears that, you know, make the watch turn and make our district run every day. We have an amazing superintendent, and it wasn't that long ago that his contract was finalized, and we all said he deserves what he was given to him because he's done a good job, and we want to keep him here in Clifton. So we should feel the same about our teachers. We want to keep them here, and we should give them what they deserve. I understand that money, of course, isn't growing trees, and that there isn't an unlimited amount, but we have to assess here what matters. In a time where we already have shortage of teachers, I cannot stress how important this is. I don't think of any of them, I don't think any of them got into the profession to become rich, and their real motivation isn't the dollar sign, but everyone needs to live comfortably. And if teachers, one, are personally or financially worried, who do you think is affected in the end? And furthermore, if teachers feel they are not valued by the district, then how do you think they'll respond to district initiatives and the direction of administration that's set in place? Once again, who loses in the end here? Of course, the answer is students, and I just wanted to remind this board that student success is at stake here as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Elias. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's Lori LaLama, and I am the president of the CEA. Today I stand before you to emphasize the critical role of parental involvement in education, as well as being an integral part of our district. Research consistently shows that when parents are actively involved in their child's education, students achieve higher academic success, have better attendance rates, exhibit improved behavior, and develop strong social skills. Therefore, fostering a strong partnership between schools and parents is paramount to the overall success of our students. Parental involvement must address a pressing concern that is affecting the learning environment in our middle schools. The vandalism occurring in the school bathrooms. These bathrooms are nicer than mine, they're new ones. The destructive behavior not only poses a safety hazard, but also detracts from the overall educational experience of our students. As we seek solutions to address this issue, I believe that parental involvement and support are crucial elements in our efforts to stop the vandalism and promote a positive school environment. First and foremost, it is essential for parents to have an open and honest conversation with their children about the importance of respecting school property and the consequences of vandalism. By reinforcing positive behavior at home, parents can instill values of responsibility and accountability in their children, which will ultimately translate to more respective behavior at school. Moreover, fostering a sense of ownership and pride in the school facilities can significantly deter destructive behavior. The referendum, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and millions, actually, I'm sorry, and for kids to go in and vandalize the brand-new bathrooms is absolutely pathetic. Parents can encourage their children to take pride in their school environment by invoking them in activities such as beautification projects, mural painting, and other initiatives that promote a sense of ownership and stewardship. By creating a positive and inclusive school community, we can cultivate a culture where students feel invested in maintaining and protecting their school environment. In conclusion, parental involvement and support are essential components in our efforts to address the vandalism occurring in the middle school bathrooms. You also have a powerful catalyst for student achievement and overall school improvement. By implementing strategies, we can cultivate a culture of partnership between schools and parents that enriches the educational experience for all stakeholders. Together, let us commit to prioritizing parental engagement as we work towards the collective goal of empowering every student to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, motion to close.
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Bastard, second by Commissioner Mejia. Next is adoption of the minutes from March 7th, 2024. Looking for a motion to adopt the minutes as written?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Brunsack, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Mejia. Roll call, Mr. Shada, please.
Ms. Bastard?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Robertozzi, do you have anything to report this evening?
I do, Mr. President. Thank you so much. Good evening, commissioners, those in the audience, faculty, staff, students, those in the community watching from home. I'd like to reiterate a couple of congratulations that Jada had mentioned earlier, a significant achievement, a big congratulations to our high school mock trial team who won the state mock trial championship of, and it's not one of these state championships like in some of our sports that are by group or by region, there's only one. There's one state champion in the entire state of New Jersey, and Clifton High School did it. Not only did we do it, we're the first high school from Passaic County to ever win the mock trial state championship. So very, very proud of our mock trial team under the leadership and guidance of Mr. Vanderhay, and I'll be asking the board to recognize the team and Mr. Vanderhay at a future meeting either in May or the beginning of June. Absolutely, that deserves a round of applause. Also, I don't have the details, but I want to, and I'll learn more, and I want to congratulate our robotics team who qualified for the world championships in Houston. I mean, what an opportunity for our students to be a part of these competitions where they get to travel across the country to Houston and participate against students from other countries. All right, so it's, we'll get more details on that, and typically, we recognize the robotics team, they usually come here and do a little demonstration for us each year, which is always really cool, so we'll recognize them when they do that. I think last year that happened in May, so we'll do that again. Excuse me. School Eight had their annual tricky tray on March 15th, and the principal and PTO asked me if I could thank the members of the community, School Eight's staff, and all the families who attended, and the PTO would also like to acknowledge the many businesses, especially the local Clifton businesses, who donated prizes for the event. It was mentioned by Ms. Puza from the Clifton Education Foundation, but it's absolutely true. We should be frequenting the businesses that support our staff and our students, so thank you for mentioning that. Anytime you want to give a plug to a business, certainly feel free. And by the way, thanks to the Clifton Education Foundation for all that you do. That crew right there in the back, they're the heart of the foundation, and they do, look, they look innocent, but don't, don't get them started, right, because they're, you know.
Troublemakers.
Yes, they are some troublemakers. Former nun in the bunch, too. Uh huh. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. None of this, none of that. Thank you for all you do, because you do provide extra things for our students and our staff that the board can't provide, so thank you for all you do. Look forward to collaborating with you again in the future. Last year, the Clifton Education Foundation supported a dinner for our Governor's Educators of the Year. There's one from each school, and our Support Staff of the Year. And thanks to the Clifton Education Foundation, we were able to have a nice dinner for them prior to a board meeting, and I'm hoping we can discuss perhaps doing that again soon. So I'll be in touch, guys. Thanks, thanks again. Elias, did he, did Elias leave? Just wanted to commend Elias, he's always very well-spoken, and I appreciate his perspective from himself, but he also does speak on behalf of many students, and so, you know, I'd like to take into consideration some of the things he says. Most recently, he did approach me, emailed me formally, I won't get into the details, but talking about naming a facility after a community, a member of the community. And this had come up previously, and we don't have a policy in place, and we really should so. I've put that on the agenda for our meeting, Ms. Suarez, on Monday. We should have a policy in place when requests come in from any person or organization to name a facility, to name a room, to name something after a prominent citizen, an employee, because otherwise it could become very subjective, it could be done on a whim, some people could be recognized, some people not, so from the administration's perspective, it would be best if we had a policy that I could follow when such a request comes in. My previous district, we did have a policy, I'll share a sample of that with the policy committee, but basically, there was a, when a request would come in, there was a committee formed of board members who would review it and then look at certain criteria. And it sounds kind of funny, and I'm not meaning to be funny, but one of the big criteria you have to determine is, does the person have to be dead? Does the person still be alive? And there's a reason why I, you know, I say that, because that's a critical factor that you have to take into account. In my previous district, we named the gymnasium after one of our coaches who happened to be the coach at the time, and two years later, he left the district, and his name was on the court. So maybe you don't have to be dead, but maybe you need to be retired, right? So these are things that, why a policy is necessary for us to go to. So I wanted Elias to know that we are working on that, because I, believe me, if I don't respond to him, he'll follow up. So I do want him to know that we're working on that. And also, I don't know the question he asked about the physicals, why we used to do them and we don't any longer, but that's certainly something I would like to find out. There must have been a reason why we stopped doing it, maybe it's something we can look into doing again. Finally, guys, and I'll send you a more formal invite, but on April 22nd, there will be a bench dedication for Emmanuel Manny Rodriguez, a former School 16 student who passed away in 2021 after a long-fought battle with cancer. He attended Clifton School 16 and Woodrow Wilson Middle School. He attended Clifton School 16 and Woodrow Wilson Middle School, he was a member of Team Praise of the Clifton Midget League Baseball and a martial arts student. The dedication will occur at 3:30 PM outside of School 16, right next to the tree that was planted for him in 2022, and all are welcome to attend. The board had previously authorized this bench, and it has come to fruition, so I will send you a formal invite, but just for your calendars, April 22nd, at 3:30 at School 16. And last but not least, I was remiss in not remembering that tomorrow is Vinnie Constantino's birthday, and Employee of the Month. Happy Birthday Eve, Vinnie, hope you have a great birthday tomorrow. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. I will hold my comments till the end. Next up is the first reading of policy, it's Policy 5600, Student Discipline Code of Conduct, and Policy 6620, Petty Cash. Looking for a motion to approve the first?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Brunsack, second by Commissioner Mejia. Roll call, Mr. Shahada, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes. Unfinished, business is next, is there any unfinished business discussed? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to some monthly recognitions that we have. The first is for Autism Awareness Month, and Commissioner Suarez, would you please read that resolution?
Certainly, thank you. Whereas Autism Awareness Month in April aims to celebrate and promote acceptance for the condition that occurs in one in every 36 children have been diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, and whereas individuals with living autism spectrum disorder can achieve independence and live purposeful lives when afforded the support system and opportunities that each and everyone deserves, and whereas many individuals and families living with autism know that acceptance is often one of the largest barriers to finding and developing a strong support system, whereas policies need to be implemented that break down barriers for individuals with autism so they may succeed in their chosen communities, and whereas self-advocates, family caregivers, professionals, and others who work every day to create more opportunities for individuals with autism should be recognized for their contributions, and whereas one goal of Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month is to spread awareness, foster acceptance, and empower everyone in the autism community for the resources needed to live fully, and whereas the ultimate goal is to create a world where everyone in the autism community feels accepted and connected to the support they need when they need it. Now, therefore, be it resolved, with the autism diagnosis rate increasing, the Clifton Board of Education would like to take the month of April to celebrate the differences of, learn more about, and empower autistic individuals. Wear blue this month to recognize and celebrate our population with ASD. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez. April is also Arab Heritage Month. Mr. Commissioner Siano, would you please read the resolution?
Absolutely. Whereas the Clifton Public Schools Board of Education recognizes the importance of honoring and celebrating the rich cultural heritage of Arab-Americans, whereas Arab Heritage Month provides an opportunity for students, educators, and community members to learn about and appreciate the contributions of Arab-Americans to our society, culture, and history. Whereas the celebration of Arab Heritage Month fosters inclusivity, diversity, and understanding among students, educators, and community members. Whereas it is essential to promote cultural awareness and understanding to combat stereotypes, prejudice, and discrimination. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Clifton Public Schools Board of Education hereby proclaims the month of April as Arab Heritage Month in Clifton Public Schools. Be it further resolved that Clifton Public Schools shall incorporate educational activities, programs, and events highlighting the history, culture, contributions, and achievements of Arab-Americans during Arab Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that Clifton Public Schools encourages educators to integrate lessons and materials about Arab-American heritage into their curriculum throughout the school year. Be it further resolved that the Clifton Public Schools Board of Education encourages the observance of Arab Heritage Month through various activities such as cultural performances, guest speakers, art exhibits, film screenings, and community discussions. Be it further resolved that Clifton Public Schools encourages students, educators, and community members to actively participate in and support the celebration of Arab Heritage Month. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Commissioner Siano. April is also School Library Month in New Jersey. Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, President Paris. Whereas the month of April 2024 has been designated nationally as School Library Month by the American Association of School Librarians, and whereas school libraries with Clifton Public Schools strive to provide equitable access to resources and instruction for all students, and whereas Clifton Public School Libraries endeavor to provide materials and resources that reflect the diversity of our students and communities while upholding a student's freedom to read, and whereas the libraries of Clifton Public Schools provide resources and instruction to support the implementation of New Jersey's student learning standards, and whereas the School Library Media Specialists of Clifton Public Schools develop information literacy skills instruction to empower students to effectively locate, evaluate, and apply knowledge, and whereas the School Library Media Specialists of Clifton Public Schools play a crucial role in literacy development, fostering a lifelong love of reading amongst students, and whereas the School Library Media Specialists of Clifton Public Schools curate literature appreciation activities and promote both content and recreational reading to every student, and whereas the libraries of Clifton Public Schools contribute to students' social and emotional learning needs, and whereas it is both fitting and proper that special recognition be given to school libraries and the role of certified school library media specialists in ensuring an environment that fosters reading and learning, investigation, and research, and the lifelong pursuit of knowledge for all students in New Jersey. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Clifton Public Education, Board of Education recognizes April 2024 as School Library Month in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Looking for a motion to approve the following. Under Education Administration, Items 1 through 13.
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Seconded by Ms. Bassford, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Roll call, Mr. Shahada, please. Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under Personnel, Items 1 through 24, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Roll call, Mr. Shahada, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, abstaining on P-21, mine name only.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes, with abstention on C-21, my name only.
Motion carries.
Under Finance and Facilities, seeking a motion to approve Items 1 through 18.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Brunsack.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassford. Roll call, please, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Bassford?
I have, Mr. Brunsack, got a question?
Sorry.
I had a question on P-4.
Question, okay.
This is an agreement between us, the Board of Ed, because we own a portion of Main Memorial Park, where we own up to where the pond is, I believe, right? So, and what is the, do we, it's a dollar, what is the lease agreement, or is it just a handshake?
It is a dollar from 1984.
Thank you, that's the only question I have, thank you.
I have a question. Thank you for P-8. If you can please, and maybe, Mr. Shahada, you can explain, I wasn't clear what Phoenix Advisors are, or what they do for our district. It's a low cost, but I just wanted to have clarity around their role.
This is the company that, like, does the bonding for our referendum, so we have to renew it every year.
Thank you.
They're a financial advisor.
I read it, I just couldn't gain clarity with the language that was used, but thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Shah.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes, but abstain on F-18, 5121.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes, abstaining on F-17, and voice 109935, Tom Hock Promotions, because of my business relationship.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board Member Comments, so we will start, if my memory serves me correct, I think we start with Mr. Siano.
Go for it. Put me on the spot, nice. Good evening, everybody, I got some stuff to say here. Congrats to the Students of the Month and the Employees of the Month, it's great to see such amazing people in our district. I do want to give a shout-out to Vinnie, one of the first people to come out and support me, because my father was his mailman, which is a good reason to support me, and Samantha, I'm just getting to know you, but your dedication really shines, so I was very happy to see that tonight. Thank you, Jada, for always keeping us informed with your student report, it's very vital we stay up to date. April marks Autism Awareness Month, it's a time dedicated to fostering an increased understanding and acceptance of autism. Together, we should work towards a future that fully includes people with autism. This month, we also take a moment to appreciate the storied history, vibrant traditions, and the enduring spirit of community that define Arab heritage. I was honored to be invited to attend the CHS Project Unified Talent Show, that was an amazing experience filled with unbelievable talent. Just before the meeting, I was able to attend the ribbon-cutting for the new weight room at Christopher, and I think that was a great investment in our students, that weight room is amazing. Some congratulations. First, Clifton earned Best Community in Music Education for the sixth year in a row. I think we all know how important music is, so I'm very happy to hear this. And to the CHS Mock Trial Team for becoming state champions, that's truly an amazing achievement, I can't wait to see what the future holds for you. It's also School Library Month, I urge everyone, everyone, to go to your nearest library and do what I did, get yourself a library card. Consider looking into the benefits of joining the Friends of the Library, it's very important to support our libraries, and learning never stops. Go take a look and explore the selections and all the programs that they offer. Clifton Junior Athletic League kicked off this past weekend, I'm looking forward to attending some games. I gave up my Yankee tickets this year for this position, so I could give it my full attention, so I'm certainly, these games will make up for it. It's all right, it's all right, I'm gonna go, but now I have these games, I'm looking forward to it. To all those in the community who reach out to me regarding concerns, please keep it up. I ran with an open-door policy, I stand by that, and my phone is always on for your calls. I do have to thank Danny and Mark for getting right on top of these concerns as I present them to you, I am truly grateful for your help and your care for the district. Cliftonrec.com has a lot of summer events and programs, my personal favorite is Music Together at the Clifton Arts Center. The amazing Kim Latiano is the instructor, check the schedule, it's certain Wednesdays in June and July, it's good-quality time with family, singing, dancing, while learning to support your child's musical development, and I hope everybody has a good week, that's all I got.
Thank you, President Paris. So, I just wanted to ask a question first before we start, if that's, if that's okay. So, in terms of using the track, right, didn't, actually, I think currently, right now, we use the track for fundraisers, do we not? Like, it's Autism Awareness Month, I think there's an autism walk in May, I think we've had Relay for Life, I think we've used that multiple times for similar things, is that correct?
Yeah, those have been specific use-of-facility requests from organizations.
Right, but, and they continue, right, we have one in May, which will be a fundraiser, these are all worthy causes, but public comes and they walk on the track, the day, half the day, whatever it is, right? So, we kind of use it in a similar fashion, but via the use of facility, right? Okay, thanks. So, congratulations to all of our employees who won the award, as well as our students. I want to shout-out Abel, who I read his, I really want to recognize him for his empathy, and I want to say condolences to the Dickey family, and thank you so much for coming out. My older son, Anthony, went through, attended School 11, Mr. Dickey was his principal, I remember him well, then my son, Matthew, had him for kindergarten and first grade, and then we created, we built School 17 and had to move him, that's a whole nother thing, but they both had Mr. Dickey as a principal, and when he retired, he was missed, but he will be bested, and my condolences, and thank you for coming out. But to Abel, thank you so much for doing what you did, I mean, it's no wonder you won this award, and it's just a great example of our students, thank you. The mock-trial team, I just have to do this, I'm sorry, is the first Passaic County school, public or private, to win top honors in the 40-plus years of the state mock-trial competition, Clifton's team. The first Passaic County school to be commended, so, not PCTI, not Little Falls, not Wayne, on and on, Clifton's mock-trial team, the first Passaic County school, so kudos to them. Yeah, happy, you know, autism awareness, I have someone in my family who is dear to me, and so, just thinking about and celebrating everybody, celebrating that. School Library Month, I mean, thank you so much to all of our librarians and our media specialists, especially now, thank you for all that you do. Mr. Rose, thank you for all you do, congratulations, very well-deserved, and, yeah, happy American, I'm sorry, happy Arab Heritage Month, and I think that's it, good night.
Thank you, President Paris. I first like to congratulate all of our employees for being Employees of the Month, and a big thank you for all you guys, I know mostly you probably have other job offers, seeing other opportunities that pay a lot more probably, but thank you guys for sticking with us and making our district extremely well. Congratulations to all the Students of the Month. In terms of our spring sports, I know you guys are having a terrific season to open it up, so keep it up, especially the boys tennis team, I see that they're pretty hot right now, especially after beating one of our biggest rivals, Passaic. Like Mr. Siano said, it was a great talent show that happened over at the high school, and as, in contrast to the weight room, it's beautiful. I am, I was talking to one of the coaches before, and a former teammate of mine saying, oh, how we wish we would have had this back, back when we were there, especially because of how good our football team and track team are getting these past couple years, this is obviously going to improve in how they perform on and off the field. And a huge shout-out to Mr. Vanderhay in terms of the mock-trial team, back when I was on the mock-trial team, we made it to the semifinals of that round, so to actually be there and celebrating their big win, especially versus Midland Regional, that's the school that, I believe that's the school we lost to, or it was Notre Dame Academy, but it was huge seeing that, the moment when the judge came out, it was almost like a drum roll of silence, and as soon as it came out, everyone's bracing into tears, jumping up and down, and I knew we were going to win from the moment I heard their opening. I knew we were going to win it from that moment, and I said, hey, it's already a close case, so congratulations to them, I know we're going to honor them, hopefully within the next month, and I wish them the best of luck going down to Delaware, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. First, congratulations to all the award winners, I know we have talented individuals here in Clifton, and I'm glad that we have an opportunity to recognize them. I was glad to see the PBSAS program is having a positive impact, I'm hopeful to see that the behaviors continue forward and outside of school, I know that's a, we do have a sort of a barrier there, like you said, we could only interact and do things within the school walls, but I hope that they take that with them and bring that outside of school as well. My condolences to the Dickey family, the daughter said she was looking for a sign- My condolences to the Dickey family, the daughter said she was looking for a sign, and as you mentioned, you know, we had Abel stand up here and say what an impact he had on his life. I mean, a lot of reasons why people go into this profession is really for that, and they never know who they really, you know, have an interaction with, or someone who they touched along the way. So I was glad to see that happen and unfold in real world example. I just want to thank all the groups who fundraise for schools, clubs, and teams, I know that's a tough role to do, and allow everyone to partake in everything that we do here, so thank you for that. Mr. Elias talked about opening the track, and we talked about also what we're doing at the Memorial Pond, where they're doing some sort of like renovation there. Maybe it's possible, and we should bring this to the Municipal Alliance meeting, maybe it's possible that they put a little track around there for people to walk. If they're just looking for a place to walk, it could be something that we do there, and we don't have to open up the other side of the track for them, just an idea. The doctor physical, at back to school night, they reminded everyone to get these physical forms in because they do take a while to come back, and I did experience that myself with, when my daughter was trying to do something with dance. So I know there is, there is something there, I just don't know what the situation is or how to fix it, but there is definitely something there. And with the facilities, the bathrooms, as they said, they're marking up the walls, maybe we bring that to facilities to see if there's something that could be done to coat the walls or coat the divide areas in tiles to make it easier to clean. Other than that, just, you know, instructing students not to do that, maybe periodic bathroom checks, if you know which students had gone into the bathroom, maybe you could identify who's doing it. That's the only ideas that I have. And that's all I had tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to give a shout out to all the students who were invited to the All City Strings Concert, Mr. Leschewitz, and all the other admin and staff who helped make it happen, it was absolutely fantastic, and at the end, they had never done this before because there are about 300 students in all, so they ended up doing a, they ended up doing a song at the end of 300 of them, and it was amazing, what can you say? And this is competitively based, so congrats to all the kids who made it and got the invitation over there, absolutely fantastic. Other things going on in the city, shout out to the Clifton Junior Athletic League, based out of Albion Park, for all the great work they do for the kids in this city, Commissioner Fantry with youth baseball, all the coaches, including Bob Calley, Wayne Bilbao, Jason Coriano, Chris Peruta, Ken Lee, all the other volunteers who helped get it done. Personal shout out to Ms. Samantha DeRose, Employee of the Month, this was the best speech I have heard tonight since I was sworn in, it was heartfelt, selfless message, what else can you say but thank God for a high caliber, high quality employee like Samantha, thank you for everything you do. And finally, shout out to Principal Hamda, I had forgotten about the solar eclipse this year, till we mentioned it about six weeks ago, approximately, I don't even remember where we were, and he was discussing this celestial event, and it so profoundly impacted me that last week I ended up booking a room on Thursday for Sunday night, Sunday afternoon I drove out there to Cleveland, and it rained Sunday night, so I freaked out, and my twin brother had been there since Friday, so he's like, come out 40 miles west of Cleveland, so I was there and never seen anything like it in my life, and if anyone else had the honor to do something like that, it was absolutely breathtaking and beautiful, very emotional event, and you just see darkness, and there was also a red dot at the bottom of the eclipse, which I made sure I wasn't hallucinating, so everybody else surrounding me, and it ended up being a solar flare, which was insane, but it was absolutely beautiful, so shout out to Principal Hamda for mentioning that. That's all I have, thank you for your time, God bless America, good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, to the Employees of the Month, congratulations to Vinny and Sam, even on the weekends, you're at events, taking pictures, and you memorialize the beauty of our district in a profound way, and your pictures are outstanding, so heartfelt thanks, and she was also one of my daughter's favorite teachers, so, yeah, you shaped her to go into communication, so it's kind of, you're it. Condolences to the Dickey family, and to the Film Festival on May 1st at 6 o'clock, I will be there, I have two former alumnis that were at the Film Festival, we still have Evil Elmo living in my house, my basement was under construction, and Samantha turned the basement into a dungeon, and thus evolved Evil Elmo when she locked my then-young son in a dog cage, and Evil Elmo attacked my son. It was a great, we still have it, so it's, you know, the memories that our students make from the Film Festival and their products are outstanding. So if you have nothing to do at May 1st, sashay over to Clifton High, sashay over at 6 o'clock, and go watch fine, outstanding, impeccable talent, the future of our world making films, they're incredible, so please do that. Congratulations to the mock trial team, the robotics team, I went to see Project Unify, saw some of my fellow colleagues there, to Ms. Puozzo and the Education Foundation, ladies, thank you for everything you do. Thank you to Jada, and thank you to Elias for getting up and speaking, the weight room today was unbelievably beautiful. If you haven't, when you go over to the stadium, poke your head in, if it's open, peek in the windows, everything was so pristine and beautiful, and for somebody that has to have everything in order, all the names are the right side up, the weights say Clifton mustangs on them, it's just, the detail was outstanding, so go there and see it, from what it used to be to what it is now. Thank you to the residents of Clifton that allowed this board to make that decision, to give that to the future of this district, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. You know, it's just beautiful to see, I just hope, there's a couple of the projects that have to go on over there, I'm hoping that we, as a board, get to see them come to fruition as well. Last but not least, I have to send my deepest condolences to Dana Howard. She's an HSA mom, I know her for a long time, condolences to you and your family on the sudden passing of your husband, Robert. My thoughts are with your family, with Emma, Lucy, and James during this very difficult time, deepest condolences, Dana. You're a rock at School 15, and your husband was, supported everything you did and supported the school system, so my heart goes out to you and your family, if you need anything, you know where we are. She's a very big involved parent with the HSA Committee, she's involved in the district, and she's always supported this district with everything we've asked of our parents, so my deepest condolences, that's all I have, good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Bassford. I'll repeat some of my other colleagues' comments, it's hard not to after they all spoke, but they're important things to recognize. Did I miss someone? I'm so, I am so sorry.
You're very forgiven, President Perez.
Starting with Joe, Commissioner Suarez, it's all yours.
Thank you, it's quite all right. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all the winner, our award winners, students and staff, and Sam, thank you so much for all the work you do, I'm appreciating getting to know you and look forward to developing our relationship in the next three years, and hopefully more than that. Clifton, I say this every meeting, and I think I'll continue to say it, I just really appreciate it more and more, the students, you know, Mr. Ragsdale, this young gentleman, young man, I really appreciate what he has to share, I agree with you, Dr. Robert Ozzy, that when he speaks, it comes with intention and meaning, and I really appreciate what he had to share regarding the physicals, and another perspective to take with that as well, depending on your insurance, if it's an annual physical that you, sometimes they only approve once per year, and if your next physical isn't due until February or April, some students may miss out on some sports as a result of, you know, their insurance, that they have nothing to do with, so thank you, Dr. Robert Ozzy, for wanting to look into that further. And this is just a quick thing from last meeting, I mentioned to discuss the policy on our recess, or rather, our recess policy, and that will be discussed in this coming meeting that we'll have next week. And then just other things that Clifton is doing, I had the privilege to attend Project Unify Talent Show, to say I was delighted is an understatement, the students shined so beautifully, so brightly with their interests and their talents, I just, I was in tears with how much joy the parents had, with how much support went in from the teachers and staff and the students, both from the high school and other programs, it was just truly, truly a beautiful event. I wish I could bring, could have brought my son with me so he could celebrate the diversity of Clifton, it was really beautiful. Also, big congratulations to the mock trial team, what a wonderful accomplishment, thank you, Commissioner Santiago, for really nailing exactly how special it was, so thank you for sharing that. And, yes, I also, before I came on board, and as I shared with the public, I wanted to let you know how I continue, I wish to continue to better myself as a board member and as an educator. Today, I attended a professional development at Hackensack Meridian School of Medicine, right here on Route 3, and they're looking to partner with local public schools, so I am partnering with some people there just to learn more information, see if and how we can potentially, and of course, I'll talk to Dr. Robert Ozzy, there's nothing there, I'm just in conversation, meeting people, but things that we discussed today were social emotional learning, teacher retention, and the influence of, the influx of multilingual learners, all things that we've discussed here, so I'm really looking forward to seeing how and if we can partner, because they seem like they're doing some really good work there. And also, this weekend, I'll be attending the American Education Research Association in Philadelphia, this is the state of art research education internationally, coming here to Philly, last year it was in Chicago, and I plan to really learn a great deal there, you have the educators from around the world doing the leading edge research in education in all of these things, whether it's social emotional learning, but I just mentioned it, including technology, all things in education, so I look forward to sharing some things that I learned with my colleagues here. Thank you, I thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez, I'm sorry, I, it's hard to keep track sometimes. What's that? Should I, you want me to mention, okay, yes. Mr. Shah reminds me that our next meeting will be April 25th, it will be at the High School Media Center, and it's a special meeting, we call it a board retreat, most people would call it professional development, we have a representative from New Jersey School Board Association that comes in and helps facilitate some training for us, and I thank my colleagues for dedicating the additional time, and also for dedicating this board to work towards becoming a certified board by NJ SBA. It takes quite a bit of additional training, and takes quite a bit of dedication from everyone's part, and it's greatly appreciated, and as a board, we decided we wanted to do that to improve ourselves and be the very best we can be. Congratulations to all the award winners, and particularly Mr. Rose, who's everywhere all the time, if there's anyone who exemplifies excellence in one Clifton, it's you. Thank you to the Clifton Education Foundation members that are here this evening, and Ms. Puozzo who spoke, and all you do for our community, our school community, there's just so much more we're able to offer our students because of you, and it is greatly appreciated and Congratulations to the mock trial team, the robotics team, we won, someone mentioned, I believe, Tony mentioned, or Mr. Siano mentioned, about, this is the sixth year that we won an award for music education here in Clifton. It's an area very near and dear to my heart, but the arts in general in Clifton, and how they really, they really enhance our students' learning, be it the Project Unify Talent Contest I saw, displaying some fantastic vocalists and comedians as well, it was quite the gamut of talent. We had our All City Band and our All City Strings over the last month, which were the very best of our elementary, middle, and high school bands, all of which I can say perform well above their levels, and are quite amazing. Our wind ensemble, our high school wind ensemble recently participated in a competition where we took silver amongst some very, very, very good bands in the area, so I'm very proud of them. Our Cass Film Fest that's coming up soon, something that you don't want to miss, and just all the areas where they be the visual arts, music, dance, theater, you name it, I mean, these are the things that have not only enhanced students' lives, but also are quantitatively proven to advance academics and learning. So it's just a wonderful, wonderful program that we have here in Clifton, and I'd just like to thank all those that helped make that possible for students. May 18th, just another shameless plug, is the Clifton Community Band's Lollipops and Roses Concert, half the proceeds are shared with the Clifton Education Foundation that's here at the High School Auditorium, if you have time, please come and see us. And that's all I have. So, new, next topic is new business, anyone?
Yeah, I have something, and Dr. Robert Ozzy took a walk outside, excuse himself. There's been a lot of chatter on Facebook and social media about the difference between Abbott and non-Abbott district, so for the community, now that we have everybody's attention, could you explain, could somebody explain, I'm asking the question through you, Mr. President Perez, if somebody from the administration can explain how a district becomes, the other question that was asked of me, can Clifton still apply? Can you just tell them the parameters of how this works, and then this way maybe we can clear up some misconceptions? Thank you.
Mr. Shah is aware of that?
Far too aware, yeah, so it was something that was created in the 1980s by the legislature to be in compliance with the Constitution, to give all students an equal access education. It's mainly geared towards impoverished districts with a low tax base, so, you know, the Trentons, the Camden's, the Pattersons, the Passaics, unfortunately, our neighbors, and they just dumped in a bunch of money into those districts where like 90% of their budget comes from the state instead of like local revenue like we have here. In the early 2000s, it shifted to SDA, it is not an application process, it is something that if you just have the community that can't support the taxes that they're needed for the local district, the state has to step in and bear the cost.
So my question would be, does Clifton currently in 2024 qualify to become an Abbott district?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Yeah, my understanding is a combination of real estate value and median income, and in fact, we haven't had a real estate reappraisal in 30 years, so I think that Reds recently somewhere were appraised at somewhere around $5 billion, based on the old standard, which conservatively, conservatively, the estimate was it would be at least three times that when we do our reappraisal, so we're a pretty high-value real estate district.
Also, we were compared to Hoboken, and now, you know, I grew up in Jersey City, right next to Hoboken, and back in the day, the community was impoverished, and now through gentification, just like Jersey City, you can't, you can't touch a home on a regular street for over $1 million. My fault, my, the house that my grandfather built, that my father was born in, it's over $1 million, I wouldn't, it's a matchbox, you know, it's a tinderbox.
Correct, and just to reiterate, this is something that was done back in the 80s and 90s, so whatever it was at that time you're kind of grandfathered in, and comparing Hoboken to us, it's not apples to apples, they're a one by one square mile, you know, and we're a city of 100,000 people, so there's no real comparison there.
The other thing that people don't realize is, back in the day, and we don't no longer get these fundings, we used to get what's called Abbott Rim funding, we used to get an extra little stipend, if you want to call it, from the state, and it did help because the communities around the Abbott districts did file suit, and they got this Abbott Rim money. So is there any way, because, you know, it is becoming quite tumultuous for us, to look if we wanted to, if, say we needed another school, we'd have to go to the local tax, to the community, where when we look over to our neighbors, and God bless them, they're getting all this free money, and they're getting school after school after school, it's hard for us to answer to the people that we, our constituents, that we're not getting that money. Is there any way that now that you have somebody, and you're talking to, our legislative team is actually working well, with the, you've bridged the gap. legislative team is actually working well with the, you've, you've bridged the gap, somebody in education, somebody that understands the needs that we have and is also our 27th district representative, can we bring this to her about how to make this fair? You know, the word is fair, that we get some more funding from the state as well for buildings.
We have, and, and just to clarify, so for the past two or three years under Governor Murphy's administration, we received roughly, this year we got $264,000. I guess you can consider it that RIM money and it's used for maintenance projects, falls under the SDA. And to your original question, uh, Mr. Canova has done a fantastic job with connecting us with the Assemblywoman and we, it seems as though we have a really good relationship with her and she understands our struggle. She is a superintendent in a, in a, in a district in East Newark. So everything that we were reiterating to her, she was understanding because she was going through the same struggles we are. So I, I do believe there is light at the end of the tunnel.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that for everybody because I was getting a lot of people who hit me up with messages and I did see the email that Dr. Robertozzi did send back to the community member. So thank you, Dr. Robertozzi, for answering those questions. We, I learned something in that email too as well, but I think that that's one of the things that we need to do is have open communication. People were chatting away and, you know, it's, it's not fair that we can't get that money, but maybe there's a way if we open our voice. And as far as Assemblywoman Rosie Begoli, I know her very well for a really long time and she is an educator first. So you have a good person in that seat.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Paris, we, we were very impressed with the Assemblywoman. We're happy to have her as our representative. We think that's a really good, really, we got off to a really good relationship with her. She understands our, our issues. Um, and I have to share something that the community member told me who, who had asked me, uh, a few, a bunch of the budget questions and also Mr. Shahad spoke to. She was just very thankful that we answered her. And I'm thinking to myself, I wonder what her experience had been, uh, in other places because of, of cour-, of course, of course I would answer. Um, sometimes people might not like the answer, but we're always going to answer. Um, and she was very complimentary. She was very appreciative of the fact that, um, I was responsive and, uh, and very also impressed with Mr. Shahad who got on the phone with her and spoke to her for, you know, I don't know how long and I, and I said to her, I said, I like to think we're very cognizant that we only exist because of the kids in the community, their parents and the taxpayers. Otherwise we don't exist. So, um, I, I say that just to any member of the community, if there is a question, of course you can come here and not everybody can come to a board meeting. If you email us, we will get back to you. We will do our best to answer the question. Um, and I was just very surprised that she was so grateful that we answered it and I guess answered it with transparency.
Can you just explain to the people in the, in the audience, in the community, when they email the board, what is the mechanism that happens so this way everybody's clear on how we do this?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's very important. So it, it is important for members of the public to know that when, when you email a board member with a concern, they're going to forward it to me and the response is probably going to come from me or a member of my staff. A board member cannot individually speak for the board. Um, they might simply respond to you that they've received your concern, they forwarded your concern to the superintendent. A board member cannot act on their own individually. So what their responsibility is to pass that issue along to the administration. It's when the administration does not handle an issue, then that issue will be brought to the full board. So please don't think that a board member is ignoring you. If you email them, um, you'll probably get a response that simply says, I forwarded your concern to the superintendent.
President Paris, um, so, um, yeah, I was actually going to share that that person then shared your response and did compare it to other areas that may not be as responsive and, um, she was very, very thankful for that. Um, you know, people think like we hide things from them or, um, you know, the Abbott district, Commissioner Mejia brought this up last meeting and we, we discussed that and we answered that and still people think like for looks, we don't want to. I mean, listen, I take that personal because I'm on this board and being a part of this board, I'm not going to let anybody, for lack of a better word, just commit fraud so that we don't get funds because it's not a good look. I mean, I'm not going to be a part of that. So, um, yeah, the more we just communicate and share what the reality is, it is. Now Hoboken, what's the criteria of getting Hoboken out of there? Mr. Shahad, thank you. It's a tiny, tiny, small town, but I don't know what the criteria is when you get off of that, but I know the criteria is how we get on it and we aren't qualifying for that. So, thanks.
Anyone else? Commissioner Mejia?
So with, uh, what Mr. Santiago just mentioned, I just, uh, if any of you guys could just answer that where the public knows, I see it day in and day out. People, um, show me texts about it. They show me Facebook posts, Instagram posts about it. In the past 20 years, were we ever presented with the opportunity and did we neglect it?
Uh, Mr. Shahad would like to answer that.
So it's, it's not something that, and Dr. Robertozzi can correct me if I'm wrong, that you're presented with the option and it's kind of yea or nay. It's if you qualify for it by the state's metrics, you're it. It, it's unequivocal. They, they put you in that bracket and, and you're there until I guess your grandfather that are timed out. I don't know how that part works.
Thank you. So for the community out there, that's the answer. We, no one here ever said, no, we don't want the funding. If they would have gave us the funding back then, I would have taken it. Yeah. Um, nothing, nothing better, nothing better than that.
Who wouldn't take it?
Yep. Well, thank you again, Mr. Shahad.
Any, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Um, this is a different matter and I just, came to me, so I didn't communicate with anyone prior to this meeting. Um, for the public portion on the commu-, uh, on the computer for Zoom, um, and of course we can table it and discuss it, uh, another time, is it possible to keep the Zoom open from the start of the meeting? Just because it's really hard to predict when you're home, when the public portion is going to begin. So if someone has intention to come on the board for, uh, for the public portion and, um, and maybe perhaps, you know, went to the restroom really quick and came back and realized we closed the motion, we made a motion to close it and they don't have the opportunity, um, to speak publicly via Zoom, is there a potential possibility that we can open it, um, indefinitely until it's presented and then we can close it just so someone can have the ear out if it's in the background and they go, oh, okay, public portion is now and, and let me come to the computer. Um, just because I, I've done that last year prior to being a, a, a board member. Um, I've wanted to participate and it, it was hard because I didn't know, it's hard to predict when, um, it, it's going to be unless you have the, you know, I know that you can participate online, uh, and in the Zoom, but I'm just wondering if there might be a disconnect in time there.
And I'll second that because that happened to me as well, but there's also a delay between this and live. So some, yeah, so sometimes depending on how long that delay is and it all depends on, you know, what they're watching on TV or YouTube or where they are.
Maybe the answer is as simple as reversing, reversing, yes.
Mr. President, President Paris, um, um, four terms on this board. So I could tell you, my first term, we started public comment eight o'clock regardless of what was going on. Somebody made a motion to suspend the order of normal order of business. Eight o'clock, it was public session, boom. Uh, we did that because it was similar to the way the council runs there. Everybody knows you want to go to council meeting, eight o'clock is public portion. Regardless of what's going on, they stop. So from, from my tenure as my experience, I would, that would be my suggestion is make it a dedicated time of when public portion is going on. I would have public portion in public first and then do the virtual, I'm actually giving people that time to get on for the, the delay. Cause I know you, yeah, because a lot of people did say, well, I tried to go on and you guys did it already and I couldn't get in. So that would just be something and that, I think it'd have to go in the policy committee.
Uh, yeah, we can run through policy, but, but as I understand, we would always break at eight and the request would be to keep open, uh, the online portion through the, do the public portion first, in-person portion first, keep it up in the whole time and then go to, uh, online.
Excuse me, aren't, aren't we always in Eric Mountain's waiting room or something like that? When you get into that room or not?
The people coming in go into a, a waiting room.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, then they're let in, I mean, Mr. Rose could explain best how this works.
She, you could see who, who's in, you could see if somebody's in there waiting.
Yeah, I, we leave it open all the time.
Right.
And then when it's minimized, you can see if somebody's popped in.
Right.
It'll display on the screen that somebody's in the waiting room.
Thank you.
And, you know, they're, they can watch or whatever and see if we.
I just think if we designate a time, people will be more cognizant of getting up, getting into that rhythm. It'll take a couple of meetings before people get used to it, but you know, that can be discussed in your committee and then this way you can bring it back to the board and we can have that debate on it.
Yeah, I do agree that it'll take a couple of meetings so, because it's the expectation, um, you know, and, and just wanting to, just waiting so if they know a specific time or the, the, um, the time to wait if they're listening in, so either one, but I'm open to a specific time. I just wanted to bring that up, um, to increase public participation.
It would be optimal to have a specific time because the meeting does timeout. It will report inactivity, so I constantly have to go up there and jiggle the mouse or whatever, which is not a problem, but it would just be more efficient and professional if we did have a time, but that's just two cents.
Thank you.
And we made a change, uh, previously so that we read all the board committee reports before public recognition. So there is a possibility if we do eight o'clock, we may not be there or do that. So, but if, if the key thing is the timing, we can do that. We can break at eight, make sure we go to public recognition, but we may not get in everything. We may, maybe we won't get to committee reports by eight o'clock. I don't know. It depends on, or get through all of them by then. It depends on, uh, how many reports I guess we have. I don't know what time we got to it tonight. I'll double check the tape and see. Okay, I'll, I'll work on that.
It, it's, it's just a, it warms my heart and if this board ever decided to go back to the second and, uh, to the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, it would really make me even happier. That was changed to accommodate two board members, um, schooling and we went, because everybody set their clocks by the first and second, um, the first and third Tuesday of every month was across street, second and fourth Wednesday was always here and that would warm my heart. But I, I do agree with my fellow commissioners that public portion is really, because that's what, we're a public school. That's our constituents, we need to hear from them. So maybe we have to adjust the time as we go, maybe eight, 30, you know? It, it, it depends on, you know, we have to watch it and watch the whole, it's, it's going to be a wheel we're starting to invent again. So we're going to have to take it from how we see, take the data and see what we need to do with it, so.
Listen, I'm, I'm willing to do a test run on this, but I've been going into that, um, Eric Mountain's room since 2021. I'm telling you, there just aren't a lot of people calling in to comment.
That's true.
It, it's, it's the God's honest truth, you know? So it's, it's sad, but true. And, uh, you know, to the people that actually come here, like Elias or whatever, Lori, she's here all the time, you know? So dedication.
And we have it and I believe the city council still does not even have that, right? They don't have a Zoom. No, so we, we at least have it.
Okay, and any other new business?
I have one other one.
Yes.
Um, so I don't know how to address this, but I just want to bring it up. So on social media, there are posts sometimes where there's just inaccurate news, like wild claims of a painted picture of a dire situation in a school. And while I know otherwise, I'm a commissioner and I cannot comment to it. So is there some way or to, to say that someone here is that person or someone from administration is that person or somehow get some information out to the public saying that there's this wild claim that, I don't know, frogs are falling from the sky in such and such school, but that's not the case? Because I get a lot of calls and emails and all concerned parents about.
It's, it's, it's a problem. Especially the other night with, with a very serious claim and people were so matter of fact about this thing happening in, in our school and it was very, very frustrating to read that. I just, I have a philosophical issue with giving credence to anything that's on Facebook. That's my problem. With us giving an official response to social media posts on Facebook. However, as you know, when it started to get a little out of hand, I had to have the principal, the principal actually asked me, could, could I send something out? Um, and so we did. Um, you know, so I, I kind of rather handle it on a case by case basis, you know what I mean? Um, Mr. Rose does alert me. She's on those things, she does alert me if she sees something that's a little questionable. Um, but to have, to say, to have Samantha go on there and issue an official statement, uh, I don't, I don't know.
Well, and then, you know, then there's Twitter and what other media are you going to monitor? It's.
I'm only thinking that in a certain specific group and, and even honestly in this setting, you know, I'm, I'm not even a member of that group, but people are sending me messages from it. Um, so I know we couldn't be on every group, but what happens is in these settings, someone will post something, 30 people will see and then other people will comment and then it's like the bad news gets even worse. And then they never hear, because they may not have students in the school, they may never hear the fact that that was untrue. And then their depiction of the school is, oh, this type of stuff occurs every day. That's Clifton. And it's just not the case. So I don't know, I, I don't know the answer, but I just want to at least bring up the problem here so that people are aware and the community is aware that maybe they have answers. I don't know.
Can, can I just, sorry. I mean, it's, it's great because we brought this in and Commissioner Bassford also alluded to, right? We are informed of certain things, right? We are aware. Plenty of people says, hey, I'm hearing this rumor. Are you aware? We are aware of certain things, right? But yeah, you, you can't, I mean, there's rumors, there's speculation, there's, people believe any story. I mean, we would be, you know, you'd be answering that all day long. But to what you're alluding to, somebody asked me that crazy same exact thing. Um, and I don't know, sometimes you listen, I mean, I love our students, but sometimes you're repeating what a kid said, you know what I mean? And it's kids and like you gotta make sure you, I don't know. But, um, yeah, you just, we can't answer every, you know, story or rumor. I don't, I don't know. I mean, they'd be doing it all day long. We, we have a mechanism for this already.
Right. There, there's emails that you could send to every parent in any school. We let them know when there's a holiday, we let them know when it's a half a day. So if it's something that becomes that misconstrued, uh, administration can send out, uh, a notification. I, I think that's probably, and that's official. That's coming from the source and it's not feeding into the rumor mill, you know? I think that's probably the best way we could communicate.
President Paris, I have to commend Dr. Robertozzi for his solar eclipse email. I mean, it was thorough. I, I actually took a screenshot and sent it to a friend of another district and I said, na, 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 na.
And because.
And they, they were very impressed.
Because one thing I've, I've learned and I've told you this is that I can't do or know everything. I surround myself with people who are a lot smarter than me. That's all, Janina.
That was great. Thank you. And Sam. It was a collaborative effort and we also had input from our nursing supervisor and our science and language arts supervisors too, so that all of our resources and everything aligned to support our teachers as well.
Her, her answer back was crickets from my end and I went, ha, ha, like that, I gave her the emoji with the tongue sticking out so that, because we compare apples to, you know, oranges and since, you know, we've never, I can tell you from 2011 when I sat here in this, well, yeah, probably this, that chair, when I first started here, the communication was nothing. It was nothing. So the text message that you get when there's things going on, it's, it's really good because at least you feel that you, you're involved and you're, you're, you're well informed. So I don't know, maybe policy can figure it out, Joe, what to do. Maybe, you know, like there was a message from Woodrow Wilson, I got a copy of that too. Somebody sent that to me, said, thank you. It was sent down. I said, that's not me, that's the big guy up, sitting in the chair. So they said, but they, they feel that the communication is so much more advanced than it used to be and appreciative of it. So if you don't hear it from.
Thank you.
The peanut gallery, yes, it is appreciative.
And sometimes we do miss things and sometimes there's miscommunication, but, um, we strive. We strive to, to do better to, to communicate and to be transparent. There's nothing to hide. And so I think we're hopefully getting people to realize that, right? You know, it's, it's more work trying to hide something than telling people, here's what happened. Um, you know, that one thing I have to improve on is I, I sometimes will text you guys, um, God, you know, there's an ambulance going to school so and so for, and sometimes a, a lot of times I forget to follow up with you and say, oh, person's okay. So I'm going to do a better job of that and try to do that a little better. Um, that's all.
Anything else?
Yeah, just adding to the, um, social media thing because that's everywhere. And I used to be much bigger on social media than I am now on my personal page because used to be much bigger on social media than I am now on my personal page, because now I don't comment on anything on my personal page. Uh, because of the position that I'm in, and I feel once you comment on something, they're gonna expect you to continue commenting. And if you don't comment on something that's tragic or drastic or a blatant lie, they're gonna assume it's the truth. Um, I only comment on my business page now and it's nothing, nothing to ever do with school or the Board of Education. I think that's very important. I don't know what you could do about that, but just to, as a commissioner, stop commenting on posts. Just leave your Facebook to be a private Facebook. Don't be a commissioner on your private Facebook unless you have a page open for that. That's the easiest way to go about it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Um, we will have executive session, uh, this evening. Uh, we will discuss some personnel and legal matters. Action may or may not be taken. Um, motion to go into executive session.
Motion, second. And I have a security matter for executive too.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bruszcak, second by Commissioner Mejia. We will take at least an hour, right?
Mr. President, Ms...
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna say an hour, because every time I say that, because use, I'm gonna pad it.
Whatever I say, double.
Mr. President.
That's right. So, uh, we'll see you shortly.
No call.
Oh, Mr. Bruszcak, yes, sorry.
Okay. Five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, yes. Enjoy.
Check one, two. Can you hear me, Mark? Okay, um, switch it back to the graphic. The, uh, switch it back to input six. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for coming. This is the Mustang Band Showcase. We are so excited to have you here tonight. My name is Brian Stepansky. I'm the band director here at Clifton High School. And the first thing I want to share with you is that I am born and raised in Clifton. This has been my home forever. And when I was a third grader at school eleven, I could not wait to join band the following year. And so I'm hoping to share some of that excitement with you tonight while we play some really fun music. We have a great program prepared. And we're going to show you a little bit about what the band is all about. Uh, now, before we continue our program, we're going to do a little thing called tuning. So... Good evening, everybody. If you can take a seat, that would be great. Welcome, welcome, welcome. On behalf of the administration and the district's instrumental teaching staff, I'd like to welcome all of you to our third annual Mustang Band Showcase for third and fourth grade families. I'm Jason Leshewitz, the supervisor of visual and performing arts, and I couldn't be more excited to start the festivities. I just had a curiosity by showing hands. How many third graders do we have here tonight? Whoa, look at that. How many fourth graders do we have? Fourth graders, too. Third and fourth, because we have some fourth graders who haven't played an instrument yet, who this event is for as well. I want to give, uh, can we get those third and fourth graders around with applause for starting their journey out? It's so nice to see all of you. You're in for a real treat tonight. Uh, while the bands are playing on the stage, third and fourth graders, make sure you keep an eye on the instrument or instruments that may be appealing to you. Know that you'll have an opportunity next year to play any band instrument that you hear tonight. And you'll also have an option, I think, a string instrument as well, if you'd like, a violin, viola, or cello. However, those instrumental demonstrations will take place at your schools in early June sometime. Your parents will have an option to either purchase or rent an instrument. And, uh, your instrumental teachers will get into all that at a later date, but we use a company called The Music Shop. However, if you want to use your, buy your own instrument off another company or online, you can do that as well. Uh, if you do decide the music, uh, if you do decide to use The Music Shop, however, you can visit their website at themusicshop.com. And note that you'll also be getting a copy of all this information from your school's teacher, some of whom you'll be meeting later tonight. You can also reach out to me via email or phone with any follow-up questions. My contact information is listed on the visual and performing arts page on our district website. Uh, before I go, I also wanted to make a quick plug for the IC program, which you'll be hearing about later on tonight, because Louie is one of our band teachers. The IC program stands for the Integrated Summer Enrichment Experience. And it's a four-week program that takes place in July only, for four hours, Monday through Thursdays. This year it's at school three, and it's a camp, and it's so much fun. I've sent my own three children to it. We have, it sells out every summer, and basically you can learn, uh, an instrument in just four weeks. You'll be learning four months versus a lesson, worth of lessons in just four weeks' time. Uh, and you can also learn coding. You can do a musical. This year it's called Finding Nemo. You could do, uh, uh, it's no homework involved. It's all fun. And, uh, Miss Louie and Mr. Louie will be passing out flyers later on if you're interested. And lastly, I want to make you aware of the Music Angels, a program that was started over twenty years ago to assist financially underprivileged families with the cost of an instrument. If you have a child who's on free or reduced lunch, please reach out to your school's instrumental teachers about how you can potentially obtain an instrument for only twenty-five dollars a year. And that's about it for my portion of the program. So, third and fourth graders, are you ready? I, I only get to hear the front. I said, are you ready? And now, led by their amazing director, Mr. Brian Stepansky, here's the 2023-2024 edition of Your Mustang Band. And the first thing I want to share with you is that I am born and raised in Clifton. This has been my home forever. And when I was a third grader at school eleven, I could not wait to join band the following year. And so I'm hoping to share some of that excitement with you tonight while we play some really fun music. We have a great program prepared. And we're going to show you a little bit about what the band is all about. Uh, now, before we continue our program, we're going to do a little thing called tuning. So, as you can see, some of our band members have changed instruments already from how we started the, the concert. And we need to make sure that we sound our best for you. So, it's going to take a quick two minutes. We're going to tune up, and then we're going to continue with our program. All right. We're going to continue the fun and games portion of our program now with a little bit of the theme from Pokimaru and that super big rock.
Okay, welcome back from executive session. Oh, Mr. Shahada, please give a roll call.
Ms. Bassford?
Here.
Mr. Brunsack?
Here.
Mr. Canova?
Here.
Mr. Mejia?
Here.
Mr. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Siano?
Here.
Ms. Suarez?
Here.
President Perez?
Here.
We're making, looking for a motion from executive session to approve items one through seven.
Motion.
Second.
By Commissioner Bassford, second by Commissioner Brunsack. Discussion saying none. Roll call Mr. Shahada, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Mr. Santiago?
Yes, but abstain on one, correct?
Yes. Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
President Perez?
Yes, abstaining on one.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to close?
Second.
Have a good evening, everyone. Can I get the bang this again?
Yeah, I like that.